Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Wednesday, August 21st, 2004, Meeting of the Cavan County Planning Commission.
Twenty-four.
Two thousand twenty-four? Thanks. Wilson Freeland?
Here.
Commissioner Gadway?
Present.
Commissioner Holler?
Here.
Commissioner Kernan?
Here.
Commissioner McQueen?
Here.
I'm here, and Commissioner Williams?
Here.
So we have a quorum. If you'd please all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tamara Blake Wallace. I'm the Planning Commission Administrator. This meeting is being conducted as a hybrid meeting, allowing for both virtual and in-person attendance. Serving as our moderator tonight is Christine Goldsmith, who will go over the rules and etiquette for tonight.
Good evening. This meeting is being recorded for record-keeping purposes. Virtual attendees will be muted to ensure no interruptions to the evening. If attending virtually on a computer or smart device, please raise your Zoom hand to indicate you wish to speak, and you will be acknowledged and unmuted at the appropriate time. If attending by telephone and you wish to ask a question or make comment, star nine on the phone's touchpad to raise your hand, and you will be called upon in turn at the appropriate time. When the floor is open for public comments or questions, those attending in person will be asked to speak first, followed by those attending virtually when called upon to speak. Please identify yourself every time you speak for the record and for the benefit of those who cannot see you. And in conclusion, please use the chat if you're experiencing technical issues with the Zoom audio or video, and we will work expeditiously to try to correct them. Please refrain from placing comments or questions in the Zoom chat, as not all in attendance at the public hearing or meeting can see those communications. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Chris, and that brings us now to item number three, action on the proposed agenda.
Commissioners, we have the agenda in front of us.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kernan?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Gadway. Thank you, gentlemen. Any comments or? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
That stands approved. Summary of actions? We have a motion on that, or comments?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Kernan?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Freeland. Thank you so much. Recognition of persons attending the meeting?
Yes. Tonight, we have with us from Planning and Zoning, Mary Beth Cook, Director, Jason Brinkley, Deputy Director of Planning. Online, we have Judy Mako, Deputy Director of Zoning. Present tonight with us is Olivia Vodato, Planner Three. And we also have Jay Cousineau, Planner Two, who is also virtual. From Public Works, we have J.R. Cosgrove, Director. With us also tonight, we have Commissioner Catherine Grasso and Commissioner Mike Hart. And serving as our PC clerk, we have Becky Parkinson. And serving as our legal counsel, we have John Norris tonight. That brings us to item number six. Major subdivisions for final review.
Mark, excuse me for one moment.
Sure.
I have to go back just a little bit. On the action on proposed summary of actions, we had a second and a motion and a second, but I did not take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Sorry, Tamara.
Nope, no problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, that brings us to item number six. Major subdivisions for final review and action. Item A, SDFP 143173, Lesby Villas Lot One, Section Two. So tonight, we are here for the subdivision portion of the Lesby Villas project. Background and discussion. I, Tamara Blake Wallace, Secretary to the Planning Commission, certify that all conditions of the preliminary approval granted by the Planning Commission on May 15th, 2024, for SDFP 143173, Lesby Villas Lot One, Section Two, have been met. Recommendations and next step? Steps, the Planning Commission's options for a course of action are: One, approve as certified. Two, recommend changes and approve accordingly. Three, request additional information from staff and defer to a future Planning Commission meeting. Or four, disapprove.
Is that the extent of the presentation?
Yes, this is just, this is the certification.
Do we have comments?
Have a couple of questions if we could.
Certainly, sir.
The... If I'm understanding this correctly, the corrective deed, that is for the $1 transfer of the two acres, is that correct?
Yes.
And question for the county attorney. I believe that this regarded something in reference to a previous MOU that was entered into by the Planning Commission twenty-ish years ago. Is that correct?
To my knowledge, yes.
Does the Planning Commission have to approve this now in order to ratify the Planning Commission decision from back then, or was the Planning Commission decision back then legal and final?
The 2005 memorandum of understanding has been approved by the Planning Commission.
John, we can barely hear you. Sorry.
The 2005 memorandum of understanding that was, was approved by the Planning Commission then?
Did the Planning Commission then have the legal authority to enter into that agreement?
That is advice that I'm not able to share on camera.
Okay. Thank you. Would the approval of this Planning Commission agreeing to it at this point be? Never mind, I redact the question.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I do have some comments before we get into a vote on whether or not this proceeds. Is, is this the last step? County Attorney or Tamara, is this the last step that the Planning Commission would see this project prior to any construction taking place?
Yes, it is at this time, unless it's deferred or denied or...
Okay. I'm not going to try and make a speech, but I do want to make a couple of comments. I personally believe that the Planning Commission is here as a citizen representation, and I believe that we as Planning Commission members need to listen to the community and the people in the community and listen to their voices. I, it is, to the best of my understanding, that I've seen, I believe, three positive or in support comments to this publicly, and I've heard at minimum a hundred plus against this project. We have submitted, or over 21 people have submitted written comments. This is a stack of them here, all of which are opposed. I did not see a single in favor of the project. I believe it is my obligation, my right, representing the rest of the citizens of the county, that I'm going to have to disagree with this project moving forward.
Thank you.
Good to agree with you more.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, point of order?
Yes, sir.
Should not we have a, a motion before us, before we continue with discussion?
That's true. That's true.
Would someone care to make a motion?
I would.
Ms. Williams?
I would like to make a motion to approve SDFP 143173, Lesby Villas Lot One, Section Two, to approve as certified.
We have a motion from Ms. Williams? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Dr. We, from Dr. Holler. Thank you, sir. Do we have further comment?
Yeah, I, I've got some for Tamara. I had asked to see the agency comments on the most recent traffic study.
Yes, the traffic, the traffic study is connected to the site plan. It is still under review by Public Works. They are, I think they've been in touch with the engineer to talk about a few revisions, but JR is here tonight if you have any further questions on the traffic study.
Second question. I don't see any current Board of County Commissioners' actions accepting the, the property that is being transferred and the deed that we have. Was there board actions for that?
Mr. Norris, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. The Board of County Commissioners is not required to take an action to accept the transfer of the property. If they object to it, they do have the opportunity to try and set aside this deed, but they've not given us any direction to proceed in that manner.
So at, at some point, a previous board accepted the, the deal?
The deed was only recorded last week, so I'm not aware of any action by the Board of County Commissioners to accept or reject the MOU that was entered into by the Planning Commission.
So, so I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding, back in 2005, was it, that this was made? It wasn't accepted by the Board of County Commissioners then. It was a deal that was cut by the Planning Commission, who we questioned, had the legal authority to accept land on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. Is that right?
So, the way the 2005 MOU was structured, with the Planning Commission at that time signing, with the property owner signing, in section 2.4, the timing provides that the property shall be transferred to the county by recording a deed by the attorney that was holding the deed in escrow. It did not transfer the property to the Planning Commission, so just...
Could you speak louder in that mic place so we can hear you?
So the property was not transferred to the Planning Commission.
Understood.
And there was not a requirement that it be accepted by the county.
And, and in 2005, it wasn't transferred to the Board of County Commissioners either. And in the agreement, there was a, for the lack of a better word, drop dead date? That if, if the, the deal wasn't completed, it was null and void. Is that right?
So there were conditions subsequent to the signing of the MOU, some of which were, as I understand, were satisfied the following month. Those were approvals for the shopping center parcel. And subsequent to that, the escrow agent was to have recorded the deed within the first year anniversary of those approvals, if I recall correctly.
What was the density in 2005 when the Planning Commission accepted the, the deal?
Olivia, do you have that information with you? Or do you have that? Wilson, I don't have that information with me right now.
Okay.
Sorry.
Does anybody know when the density changed or what it changed to what it currently is?
We're looking for that date.
While you're, while you're doing that, I got a couple more questions.
Okay.
Um, when we were supplied with agency comments, there's been, there's been some public comments made that the need for this type of housing existed. I don't recall seeing any comments from Community Resources supporting that. Were there comments from Community Resources?
No, there were no comments.
For the housing authority?
No, they were not, they're not a review agency.
But Community Resources, Community Resources is.
Yeah, but we had no comments from them.
Okay.
And that would have all been connected to the site plan, not the subdivision.
Understood.
There's the other thing. She's still looking for that date.
All right, does anybody else have anything on?
Thanks, sir. Anyone else have questions or comments while we wait for that date?
I do have a couple of follow-up. So if I understand correctly, from what I'm hearing, the county commissioners do not need to approve or disapprove to a land transfer while spending taxpayer dollars to do so. Because you said the county commissioners did not have to approve the deal. They would only disapprove it if they didn't want to do it. But if there's taxpayer dollars being spent on that, I would think that that would have to be accounted for by the commissioners.
So I'm not sure how to make the jump to taxpayer dollars being involved, but if there were a Brownfield site or a superfund site transferred to the county, we could go to court to get that deed set aside. Likewise, here, if this two acres was transferred to the county last week, the county could move to set that deed aside, but...
But it was purchased for the cost of a dollar.
I'm not aware of any actual transfer of funds, but it does have nominal consideration recited in the deed.
It states that there, for the, for the total sum of $1, the two acres would be transferred. To me, that's property sale and purchase, which I was under the impression that any real property being sold or purchased by the county would have to have the, the approval of the representation of the county citizens, which is the county commissioners.
So again, I'm not aware of any actual consideration, but much like when you purchase any commercial property or residential property, the person receiving that property doesn't sign the deed accepting that property. They, the grantors who are giving that property away are the ones who sign the deed transferring the property.
So where was the dollar?
I don't know that there was ever a dollar.
Which, if there wasn't a dollar, then that would make this document fraudulent, wouldn't it?
The deed recites what's considered, what's called nominal consideration. If there was a demand, there would have to be a payment, but I don't know that the property owner made a demand for the dollar before recording the deed. We certainly don't have any CIP projects that identify property acquisition for this property that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. And so the traffic study that we requested, that was possibly done, is still in review or still waiting on comments, or we don't have anything else to base anything on today, traffic study-wise, than we did a month ago or two months ago or anything else.
Again, we are here for the subdivision, and the traffic study is tied to the site plan. So it's, yeah. And just as, you know, just for your information, regardless of what this site would have been developed as, a village green would have been required by the Lesby Town Center master plan. So this procedure may not have been by MOU or however, but this would have transferred somewhere along the line with the development. And Commissioner Wilson Freeland, just to answer your question, it has not changed. It's still nine units per acre. That's what it was back when that was developed, and it still is.
In five? All right, thank you.
Commissioners, I wanted to just respond to Commissioner Gadway's comment, if I could.
Could you please identify yourself?
Yeah, Steve Berg on behalf of Lesby Villas.
But first, I gotta say, the chairman has to recognize you.
Understood.
Yes, this is not appropriate this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
I have one more question.
Certainly, sir.
So we have a document here with 46 names on every page. This document was sent as part of letters of concern? That's quite a lot of pages we got sitting here? Can you explain where this document came from?
That document was a petition started by one of the property owners in Lesby.
Okay, and the petition was for?
Um, the, the purpose of the petition was against the Lesby Villas project.
Okay, so I got forty...
I think there's a statement to that on the form.
Six names, and if I look at it here, I got at least 30 pieces of paper. What's the number? About 1,200? Oh, okay. That's a lot more than a few. So... Just want to let everybody know that how many people, the citizens, are not for this situation.
Excuse me, we're not taking public comment right now.
Does the chairman comment on that?
Call the question, please.
Certainly. Are there any more comments? Call the question. We'll have a roll call vote.
Thank you.
Commissioner Freeland?
Opposed.
Commissioner Gadway?
Opposed.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner McQueen?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
And I say yes.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. That moves us on to item seven, applications for site plan review and action. We do not have any tonight. Item eight, major subdivision, applications for preliminary review and action. We do not have any on the agenda tonight. That brings us to item nine, long-range planning. We have no items tonight. Item 10, items for discussion and/or action, there are none. Item 11, items of interest. Before you, item A, we have the site plan and subdivision list. It's for your information only. Are there any questions or concerns? Okay. That brings us on to item 12, public comment.
Sir?
Um, hold, hold on, please. We have a statement first that needs to be read. If you can hold your comment.
I'm holding.
Okay, there was, Resolution 6-89 was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. Persons are invited, welcome to address the Planning Commission on any matter germane to their business. Those addressing the Planning Commission should not be uncivil, rude, vulgar, profane, or otherwise disruptive to the conduct of their meeting. All speakers are asked to identify themselves and whether speaking as an individual. We allocate two minutes, or as the appointed spokesperson of a group, we allocate five. Those attending virtually, please press star nine or use the raise your hand function. And the Ethics Commission is asked that we remind speakers of public comment that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy, and lobbyists are required to register in advance.
Good evening. Those online that do wish to speak during this portion of the evening, please raise your hands, and then you will be called in turn once, in person, public comment has been made. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine to... If you're on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. And if you are on a Windows device, alt-Y, or use the command in the Zoom app. On a Macintosh, command shift Y.
Thank you, Chris. We'll start with in public comment. Two minutes for individuals, five minutes for a group. Sir?
My name is Terry Singer. I'm a resident of Lesby. I want to ask a question, and I need you to answer it for me. Is it true that Lisa Williams is now legally registered as a real estate agent with the board, and the ethics charge has been dropped by the Ethics Committee?
Sir, this is a comment section. Do you have a comment?
So are you guys not going to answer any questions again this evening?
Questions are not answered during public comment. It's public comment.
Then if that's the case, that if she just became identified as a real estate agent, then that negates all her votes for the previous year because she had not identified as a real estate agent to the board, but the board knew that. So therefore, all her previous votes are negated for the whole year. And therefore, tonight's vote is just as invalid as those previous votes because she did not identify herself as a real estate agent per the rules of the county and the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other speakers in the audience?
Commissioner Catherine Grosso, Dunkirk, Maryland. This is a, this is a comment in the form of a question, and this is for our county attorney. It's been my understanding that the Board of County Commissioners had no recourse to help our citizens with their dismay over what is being done to them. And John, we need to talk later. I certainly hope there's nothing we could have done to help these people out. Thank you.
Mr. Burris.
Burris.
Uh, David Dury, just speaking for myself. So unfortunately, right now, I think the Planning Commission is in a very difficult dilemma regarding the traffic study. The original Lesby Villas traffic study, as submitted to you back in fifteen May, was invalid under county regulations because the data underlying that study was too old. That led to a county commission request for a new traffic study, which is now under review. I've actually flagged some procedural shortfalls, some mathematical shortfalls in that study. But that study is still under review and has not been finalized. So when you are voting to approve the development, that includes a statement that it is, conforms to the adequate public facilities ordinance. You do not have sufficient documentation based on a legitimate accepted traffic study to make that finding. Now, I understand that the issue in front of the Planning Commission tonight is just a formal plat approval. So you are not asked to actually approve the development in terms of adequate public facilities. And that opportunity for the Planning Commission was on fifteen May. But the question still remains. You have not been able to get the right traffic data to be able to make a valid determination of conformity under the adequate public facilities ordinance. And because of that, I think that you probably have the legal responsibility to go back and reassess whether adequate public facilities is granted, is conformed to, once you get the new study. So I would request that you go back to Planning Commission Legal Counsel and find out whether you have that right. Otherwise, I think you've-
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, that's enough, thanks.
So my name is Mike Hart. I'm a county commissioner. I'm also a citizen. And it's a comment piece. So the five county commissioners are elected to represent ninety thousand people. Part of our duties are to put together a planning commission to help in those duties. State mandates the board. There's seven of you here. You are not beholden to time constraints, not beholden to any political pressures, but you are beholden to make sure it's done right. There's been questions that the folks have asked. The Board of County Commissioners has not given them an answer, and this board has not given them an answer. When projects like this come, they are a business. We are not talking about a guy's backyard. We're not talking about personal property rights. It's a business. All businesses are responsible for their footprint, all of them, mine included. What we have lost sight through all these processes, not just this thing, is getting it right for the citizens first. When you see the constant, whether it's petitions, questions, or whatever, and they're not answered, it's our duty as both boards to get those questions answered and get them right before we proceed. Whether it's on a transfer, whether it's on anything, we owe that to the people here. This is not a race to the finish line. There is no harm in life of saying, "I need more time to get this done." Well, my previous boards, we've done that many times. The key thing is to get the answers right. But every time I'm up here, I can predict the vote, and I'm not throwing rocks at anybody. Many times, I have apologized for votes I have made that were wrong, positions I take were wrong. At the end of the day, the focus is to get it right. Doesn't matter who owns what or who does what. But until we can answer these questions, we owe the entire ninety thousand people here to get it right. And I'm asking you, please. Take politics aside. It's not a Republican or Democrat issue or none of that. It's a community issue. Let's get it right. And if he can't answer the question, or the board can't answer the question, or you can't answer the question, we have to answer the question before we proceed. You don't do things like this to people until you know you've done everything in your due diligence to get it right. Thank you.
I'm Myra Gowens, and the citizens in First District have asked me to say something on their behalf. John, we're here again, dear, and I want to tell you, you guys just bought yourselves a lawsuit. I told them that when McConkey voted for his property to go into the, to the master plan, to the comprehensive plan. You have a young lady sitting here that has been a licensed real estate agent and never disclosed it. If you look on the Ethics Commission forms on page six, she just says she works for GSA and her dad's firm, Built Right Homes. That's it. Under law, under the Comar law for licensing and regulation, she has to report that, and she has to tell you at this meeting before she votes that she is a licensed real estate agent for anybody sitting in the audience, so that they know. Okay? And that's the responsibility that she has. Now, the citizens are going to pull together to fund a lawsuit, and we have an attorney from Anarundel County. Because you cannot get anybody to stand up for you and look after you in this county. Now, I just want you to understand this. This MOU is dated, and I've shown it before. It's been dated, it was birthed. It was a document that was birthed on the twenty-sixth day of January two thousand and five. I don't care essentially that what you build or what you have to do. I care that you thwart the law, you thumb your nose at the people, and you just barrel on, and you don't take any information, and you give no information back. This has not met the legal standards. The plan, you all right here, every one of you are going to be sued. They're going to have to sue each and every one of you, okay? But they're going to name the people who have caused the lawsuit. I'm not sitting down yet, John. You just put that, don't even start.
I'm sorry, you can-
I will, I will, I will. I want you to know that you all just talked about, this is the craziest thing to me, this MOU. And they can hear me, they can hear me, John. Okay, I will, she can have my two minutes. Let me just say this to you all, all right? This document has-
This document has-
My name is Chris Sleeper. I live in Lesby. I talked to you last month about the fire and rescue issue, about how busy they are down there. And you said you had to take that into consideration for all this stuff. I talked to Commissioner Hart about it, and he's saying there's, I mean, Somers is the busiest station in the county. Their ambassadors, "Do not stop." And they're going to have to hire a whole nother crew, which is costing the county even more money. So, I mean, the public comment don't make no sense because we're doing it after you vote. We should be talking to you before you vote. Because right now, I mean, you already voted. Just, you know, I'm just blowing hot air to you right now. But, uh- The Lesby Master Plan, years ago, and I told you about this last month. That shopping center, where the wise shopping center is, was supposed to face H.G. Truman Road. And that road was supposed to go all the way through, straight through, to the post office. And somehow, with somebody's money in their pocket, got that shopping center turned. And that little road now trying to get in and out is a pain. That little traffic study you're, you're going to have done ain't going to mean nothing because there will have to be a light put there. It's just, the traffic is, is bad now. You had another twin or some houses with all those cars coming in and out of a little road. That's another traffic light. Your traffic study is not going to mean nothing because there's no light there now. So, thank you.
Excuse me, sir, I didn't catch your last name.
Sleeper, S.L.E.E.P.E.R.
Thank you.
My name is Tracy Malloy. I live in Lesby. I believe you have my petition up there with the signatures, asking for the studies to be done. You have never heard me once come up here and say, "I care one way or another who lives in those apartments, what their income is." What I do care about is the future of Lesby and my son, who's sitting back there. You guys just sat up there and voted his future down the toilet. The schools are already overcrowded. Don't make a face, just like Mr. Gott just walked out of here and laughed. He walked by us and laughed as he walked out of this building. You need to understand-
Ma'am, which schools, which schools are overcrowded in Lesby?
All of them.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, there were teachers in here the last time that told you how crowded they are. There are so many openings for schools, for teachers right now. The classrooms are getting more. The reason why my father moved us down here was because Calvert County was beautiful. The school system was amazing. And right now, every vote that you take is dropping it down, dropping it down, dropping it down. I don't have my fancy piece of paper that I usually spend a month or two weeks to write, but you guys are, look at him. Look at his, no, you won't even look at him, okay? That is what you're doing. You are signing away his future. So my property taxes are going up, but my property value is going to go down. All I'm asking is for proper studies to be done, and you guys just keep pushing them through, pushing them through. Read the petition, look at what the people asked for. That is why you are here, not for your friends, not for your future, or maybe you might want an apartment. But you are here to do a job to protect us, to uphold, what is it? I can't even remember. Yes, thank you. Please do your job properly.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Do we have anyone online that wishes to speak?
I do have a hand.
Okay, we have one hand raised, if they can identify themselves.
Caller with the phone number ending in one-five-seven with their hand raised, please identify yourself. And unmute. On your phone, you can unmute with your mute button on your telephone or by doing star six on your keypad.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Mary DePelto, spelled D.E.E.P.E.L.T.O. I've been a citizen of the Rams Club for over twenty years, and I just want to reiterate all the other concerns that our citizens have made with respect to traffic. Especially traffic occurrence should be done to include school buses when they're running. I, I don't know how the roads are going to handle the extra traffic, the fire station, all the infrastructure. I just don't want it to repeat all those same concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others online attendees who would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand, and you may put yours down. Ms. Peltow, DePelto.
Okay, we don't have any other speakers online. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak before we move on? Mister Chairman?
Thank you very much.
Well, we can move, we want to move on to next item.
Yes, we'll move on to the next item.
Okay, that moves us on to item thirteen, Planning Commissioner Report.
I would like to speak on behalf of my closing- I would like to speak on behalf of my closing statement.
Excuse me, but we still have a meeting in progress. Could we please?
Whoa, 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 you can leave, but quiet.
I would like to respond on the record to the prior statement made by Ms. Myra Gowens and Mr. Josh Johnson on behalf of Calvert County Citizens United and concerned citizens of Calvert County at tonight's meeting, as well as July ninth and July seventeenth, meeting regarding my participation in the vote on the Lesby Villa Project. At the July ninth, twenty-twenty-four informational meeting, and after my vote approving the preliminary subdivision plan for Lesby Villas on May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, Ms. Myra Gowens and Mr. Josh Johnson stated that an ethics complaint was filed against me on behalf of Calvert County Citizens United and concerned citizens of Calvert County referring to a female member of the Planning Commission, and using the pronoun "she," obviously referring to me. And which, I must mention, my name was posted in the Calvert County Times. Ms. Gowens stated that she was seeking through her ethics complaint to have my vote on the Lesby Villa preliminary subdivision plan nullified, and to block me from voting on future matters. At the July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting, Ms. Myra Gowens and Mr. Josh Johnson again stated, along with Mr. Joe Keneff, that I had a conflict of interest, which was in the subject of an ethics complaint filed on behalf of Calvert County Citizens United, concerned citizens of Calvert County. Ms. Gowens recklessly alleged that I quote-unquote "have not followed the law." By not disclosing in my financial disclosure forms for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three that my real estate salesperson's license was in referral status, apparently, Ms. Gowens did not even bother to carefully read the financial disclosure form, which only requires disclosures of sources of earned income in the applicable years. To the very best of my knowledge, the forms were properly completed and were submitted to the Ethics Commission for review every year since my tenure on the board. My application to the Board of County Commissioners stated I was a real estate agent. During the July ninth, twenty-twenty-four information meeting, Mr. Johnson also stated that I had financial interest in Lesby Villas because I am a real estate agent. And the Lesby Villas apartment project would involve leasing and sale of real estate. The comment is also absurd and false. Lesby Villas is a proposed apartment project. So typically, a leasing of apartments would be handled by professional management company, not real estate brokers or agents. Let me make that clear, as I have no financial or personal gain whatsoever in Lesby Villas. Thus, I have no conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest during my four years of serving on the Planning Commission. I have always, always, always tried hard to disclose any interest in a matter that would, could be perceived or potentially perceived as a conflict of interest, and have consulted with counsel from the Planning Commission many of times, as a potential, I'm sorry.
Take your time.
I have tried hard to disclose any interest in a matter that could be perceived as a potential conflict of interest, and have consulted with counsel from the Planning Commission many times, on occasions also to avoid any appearance of conflict of interest. I am proud of my four years of service and the integrity and character with which I have served as a member of the Planning Commission. As a member of the Planning Commission, I have a public duty to vote on matters properly before the Planning Commission, unless I am prohibited from doing so. Section forty-one dash thirteen of the Calvert County Code Governance, Conflict of Interest, section forty-one dash thirteen A one provides in relevant part that excerpt, as permitted by this chapter, appointed officials shall not participate in a matter if, A, the appointed official has an interest in a matter of which the elected official reasonably may be expected to know. Interest is defined as any economic interest, either legal or equitable. As stated, I have no financial or other interest whatsoever in Lesby Villa Project. Any suggestion or indwendo to the contrary is simply false. As to Ms. Gowens' alleged ethic, ethics complaint, if one has been filed, I have not seen it, despite her claims that she was seeking to fast-track the complaint. Moreover, Ms. Gowens is well aware that under section forty-one dash twelve H two of the Calvert County Code, proceedings before the Ethics Commission are confidential until a violation is determined. Yet, she chose to violate confidentiality in an attempt to improperly carry on her political agenda. Nonetheless, no matter what Ms. Gowens alleges, it does not change the fact that I have no financial or personal interest in this project. Thus, I not only had the right to vote, but the duty to vote. I have listened to the citizens here tonight that have spoken, and in the other meetings brought before the Planning Board that have opposed the Lesby Villa Apartments project. However, there are over forty, ninety-four thousand Calvert County citizens that we serve on this board. In closing, I want to thank the planning and zoning staff for all your very hard work that is put in, but, that is put forth into the agenda items brought before this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. That brings us to item fourteen, adjournment.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a motion? Second? That was Mr. Gadway.
Second.
And we have a second. Commissioner Kernan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.